October 20th, 2025. And just do a roll call and then I'm going to turn it over to Laura.
Brava, absent. Nancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lohman?
Here.
Pfeifer?
Here.
Ferenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Okay, I'll turn this over to you, Laura.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we are really excited to be at this milestone here today, which is a first draft of the Integrated Resource Plan. It is the first of four different reports that Brattle Group is assisting us with. And we have Bruce Sushida and Si Shetty here today from the Brattle Group to answer any questions that you have. They're gonna, they go over the executive summary and key observations for you. What our point here is today is to offer you, our city council, the opportunities to, like I said, get your questions answered, make sure that we have this draft in a shape to present to the community. Because the next step is going to be to host meetings in order for the public to give us comments on the draft. So we will set up meetings to do that. We're targeting December 9th, in fact. If we're able to get this report, the draft report together by, we want to get that out by October 31st. And then, in that process, no matter how the comments come to us, whether it's by a member of the public emailing us, or if it's something that they asked in meetings, we're going to collect all of the questions and all of our responses to the questions and make that available to the public. And so our goal will be to get all of that by the end of the year. Max?
Yeah, so we're a bit about that timeline. We're going off of the pending Illinois legislation and some of the timeline requirements. So our plan is to release it tentatively on October 31st. We are working right now on a mailing to all residents. That's why it's actually delayed until the 31st, because we have to hit no less than 15, no more than 45 days, but we have to give 30-day notice to the meeting. So first thing is kind of getting out that public notice. So everyone should be getting a mailing from the city. We're working on getting that put together. And then, like Laura said, on December 9th, we are anticipating having the kind of public hearing, public comment session where we'll present, give some updates and kind of run through our assumptions, other things. And then the 60-day full public comment period that we'll be doing will run from October 31st through December 30th. Then from there, we'll have 90 days to kind of run through all those Q and As, get those back, get those out back to ratepayers as well as yourself. And that sets us up well coming into early 2026, where all of that will then get baked into the final IRP that you will be looking at and eventually adopting in 2026.
So with that, I will turn it over to Bruce Sushida.
Laura, real quick, the one memorandum that we got tonight says confidential draft at the top. And that's okay to disseminate to the public?
No, we wouldn't be disseminating. What they will receive is the draft, the PowerPoint.
Okay.
That is what the public is going to receive. So that is just for you.
For us, okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Any other questions for me?
Is this an executive session, or is this?
No, this is a, this is a public session.
Okay.
So, yeah. Mm-hmm.
That says confidential, too.
Yeah, that's why we're confused.
Yeah. Don't worry too much about that. It is going to be made public in the next week or two, like I said, by the 31st. So don't worry too much about that. Feel free to ask whatever and any questions you have as the city council. Yeah, don't worry. This is a-
The idea is we're just workshopping a draft with you that, that we hope to finalize shortly after this meeting. But doing that work isn't something that's covered by executive session. Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Well, thank you for gathering this late in the evening. It's only Monday. Hopefully you all have a good week. What I wanted to do first is just kind of go through the 10 or the nine key observations just as a reminder, because I understand that you had the document for a little bit of time, but at the same time, it's 100 pages long, so maybe it would have been a little bit difficult to digest. So I wanted to kind of go over the key observations that we have in this slide. And then if there are any specific questions or any specific topics or any specific slides that you want to jump to, we can do that. But let me start with the highlight. The highlight is that we did what's called an Integrated Resource Plan for the Batavia utility. The reason that we need such a plan is that the utility industry requires three to five years to build anything, whether it's a power plant, a transformer, substation. So you actually have to look ahead and plan ahead. What the cycle is, is typically that you plan ahead within the next five years with concrete plans. So, but the next five years, within the next five years, you're going to be doing X, Y, and Z. The, the next timeframe from five to 10 years is more aspirational. You kind of get a rough feel of what it may be, but you can't really nail it down, because the low growth may change, the national policy, the state policy may change, the economics may change, and so on and so forth. Then there's the 10-year and after, which is really, really aspirational. What you want to do is understand the direction of that so that you can make plans and constantly evolve the plans, whether it's the immediate five years, the five to 10 years, or the 10 to future years. And that's the whole process of the IRP. The IRP process starts with first coming up with, how much load does the city of Batavia need to serve? So that's bullet point number two. And what we observed is that Batavia has had no or very limited low growth since 2018. And that seems to be the case for Commonwealth Edison in general, and the Chicago area, and also the other Illinois utilities in general, with the exception of industrial low growth. Most of the residential low growth has been flat, and that seems to be the case for Batavia as well. And at least for Batavia, we are not projecting any new industrial or commercial load of significant magnitude. There may be a few here and there, and we understand that there's a data center that's potentially coming in, but we're not seeing something that's really going to change the load. So that was the second bullet point where we, where we developed the load forecast all the way through 2045, roughly. And the base case load forecast is roughly flat. Now, associated with that is that we do have to recognize that the city has a 55-megawatt supply contract with the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency, and that provides enough energy. Energy is the amount of power that you use. So when the light's going on, it, it's consuming energy. You have enough energy, but what, what is different is that the NIPA supply is 55 megawatts on a constant basis. You do not use energy on a constant basis. For example, in the daytime, you may use more energy. At nighttime, you may not use energy. So the nighttime energy is not as useful as daytime energy. When you need to increase or decrease your energy based on the amount that you use, that is what we call capacity. The capacity is the ability to respond to the needs at any given time. So if you need more energy during the daytime, that is the need for capacity. During the day, during nighttime, you don't need as much energy, so you need less capacity. So please understand the difference between energy and capacity. Another way of saying it is, energy is the amount of fuel that you use when you drive a car. Capacity is the number of people you can put in a car. So a car typically has a capacity of four people or five people. A bus will have a capacity of 20 people. That's the amount of people you can carry at one time. The fuel usage, or the fuel mileage, is the energy component. So you can see that the fuel consumption and the number of people that you can carry at once are two different concepts, and the same applies for energy, for the electricity industry. In the, in the IRP process, what you have to do is you have to make sure that you have enough capacity to serve the energy at any given time. And so for the load forecast, we project both the load, which is the capacity, and the energy consumption, which is the energy. So Batavia has a 55-megawatt supply contract with NIPA, so that provides enough energy, but not necessarily enough capacity. And during the daytime, when the Batavia usage exceeds 55 megawatts and it goes up to 85 or 87 megawatts, you have to buy from the market, because the, the NIPA contract only gives you 55. In the nighttime, when you're not using as much, NIPA gives you 55, so you're selling that back to the market. Overall, as of today, the NIPA contract is allowing Batavia to make a little bit more money by selling it into the energy market. But at the same time, Batavia is forced to buy capacity and also energy during the high-capacity hours from the energy market. So, so that's what we discussed in part two and part three. Now, looking at forward, we understand that the energy market and the capacity market in the future will change. So how will it change? First, we understand that the PJM market, PJM is the market operator that covers Northern Illinois all the way to New Jersey. That market is how the electricity is traded. That market is, the marginal fuel or the most dominant fuel used in that market is either coal or natural gas. Coal is starting to go down, so usually the marginal cost, marginal fuel, which is what, where the supply and demand meets in the supply, in the auction, is natural gas. So the power price that is traded on PJM is dominated by how much the natural gas price is. So you use natural gas, burn it, and that produces power, and that power price is determined by the, the price of natural gas, because that's the fuel you're using. So we're assuming that the natural gas price will still be the dominant price former in the future years as well, because if coal is, is going to be retired, and all the other assets you're building is either natural gas or renewables, there's no fuel in renewables, so natural gas becomes the dominant fuel going all the way to the future. So using that, we created a forecast of the energy and capacity prices for the Batavia region. And what we've observed is that the capacity price will probably triple to maybe go up by five times compared to today in the near future, all the way through 2040. So that's the biggest risk that we found for Batavia. Now, in order to avoid that risk, what can we do? We've looked at several options, such as building more storage, building more renewables, building a additional generator. And when we did the analysis, we looked at three different scenarios. One is the base scenario, assuming things go on as today. The second one is called the high-price scenario. The high price is what happens when the natural gas price is high. When natural gas price is high, electricity price goes high. When electricity prices are higher, electric vehicles are not so popular, because it, it costs a lot more to, to charge it. But on the other hand, when electricity prices are higher, renewables become very popular, because you can offset your electricity prices with that. So the high-price scenario assumes low load, because people don't want to pay for it, they'll, they'll hold back on consumption, high natural gas prices, high electricity prices, low electric vehicles, and, and with a little bit of a delay, high expansion of renewables. The other scenario is the low market price. That is when the electricity prices and natural gas prices are low, so electric vehicles have become popular, and also, but renewables are not as popular. So, so you can see the, the, the way things move around with the market prices. And when you look at those three scenarios, we observed that building a natural gas, what we call a reciprocal, reciprocating internal combustion engine, basically the, the engines that are in like the big ships or, or diesel engines, as people would call it in the old days, but instead of burning diesel fuel, you're bringing natural gas on it, would perhaps be the best way to hedge against the increase in energy prices and also in capacity prices. What happens is that when the energy market prices go above the cost of producing power from that generator, you will generate it from that power plant, so you can buy at that power plant's cost and not pay the higher energy price. When the energy price in the market is lower than that cost of that power plant, you simply buy it from the market, so it becomes a physical hedge for you. At the same time, because you have that physical asset, it becomes a hedge for your capacity prices as well. So that is the conclusion that we came to. But in order to build a reciprocating engine, what we call a RECIP, you want to actually start as early as possible. First step that we recommend within the initial five years is to get quotes, because what we relied on for prices is what is, is done through desktop studies. And there's a lot of data about what the study, the costs are, but the actual costs are changing on a daily basis. Some affected by the tariffs, others affected by other fundamentals. And there's also locational issues associated with prices. And there's also locational issues associated with where you could potentially build. So one of the suggestions for, from our side is solicit for actual quotes of what a natural gas asset may cost. And you may actually want to solicit saying, for any resource, so that people can come up with creative ideas, saying, they may come up with ideas like, storage plus solar is cheaper than natural gas. Now, that may fit your bill or may not fit your bill, because storage plus solar may not help you as much as a natural gas unit would, because the capacity accreditation, accreditation of storage and solar is much lower than what the natural gas capacity is. So natural gas has the benefit of, you can burn it and produce at any given time, so the, the one megawatt of natural gas almost gets 100% credit, credit for its capacity. But solar, solar gets zero credit for production during the nighttime. Even during the daytime, it only gets about 40% because of cloud conditions and so on and so forth. Storage, when we looked at the PJM market, gets about 40 to 50%. So even if the price of the storage and the natural gas is, asset is the same, natural gas assets has twice the amount of accreditation for capacity. And that's how, that's one of the reasons that we came to this conclusion that natural gas, investing in natural gas, which, by the way, will potentially reduce the overall emissions, because the PJM market is a mix of nuclear, gas, coal, and oil, and the average emission from those mixes are a little bit higher than the pure emission from natural gas only. So it is a step in the right direction, but, but if you want to do that, that's something that you, you could consider in the next five years, but start with soliciting for solutions, and it doesn't have to be limited to natural gas. We also looked at what you can do on the demand side. The time of usage rate, especially for commercial and industrial customers, seems to be the most promising. But again, this will take time, partially because you do not have the equipment to handle that in terms of communication or cacking the rates or real-time metering for, for those, excuse me, for those customers to actually figure out what the time of usage rate is. So that's probably something that you want to start exploring over the next year or two, as you, as you move ahead. Now, all this was designed to comply with the, the IRP policy, but we also took into account the customer preference that was put out by a survey. So overall, the IRP conclusion that we derived, which is to maintain the current contract with NIPA, but look into potentially investing in natural gas while also trying to figure out what to do with demand-side management, is trying to take the sweet spot between the state policy, the city policy, and what we observed from the customer preference survey. So let me pause here, because that was a lot, and see if anyone has any specific questions on one through nine. Yes, please.
When you talk about a RECIP or a reciprocating engine, give us an idea of the size of that, because obviously you see anything from a small generator for a house to a hospital backup generator. I mean, that, there, you gotta put that in perspective for us.
Okay, so some of them are used as, I'm sorry, something, something's got stuck here. Yeah. The most popular ones are in the 10-megawatt size, so they're not that big. Let's see.
Our comparison, Geneva has six, and I think they're all six, or has five of them, and they're six megawatt. They're diesels, and they're in a 10,000-square-foot building, I think. I'm, I'm trying to find the, the exact stuff here. They used to have just one big giant diesel, which was half as long as this room that they ran. And that was, I think, combined cycle, where they could run on diesel and on natural gas. But now I think they're all smaller, separate ones.
I would just say, too, with my experience in the field, I'm seeing that market right now is just absolutely exploding, that power demand, power on demand, is a very volatile market, where they're rapidly trying to increase to meet demand for data centers, power generation, yeah.
And that's exactly the reason why we're seeing the capacity price going up really significantly in the future.
Yeah, so this is just going to be a question to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So the discussion here is that for our municipal load to offset, instead of sort of storage solutions, we would have production solutions locally to help us save on our capacity challenges?
Yes.
Okay, and so it would be a locally sourced generator?
That will help you avoid both the capacity and also buying higher-cost power from the PJM market when you need it, because the Batavia load typically goes up during the summertime, and that's when the prices are the highest.
And, and that would be as opposed to filling up batteries during low-load periods or used during high-load?
And we did look at batteries, along with other resources. If I can find the right slide. Now, the keyboard, arrow on the keyboard does not work.
Okay. I found the Geneva stuff. It's five-batterpillar natural gas engines.
Okay, so, so this slide, we looked at batteries. The, the green is the battery. The yellow is solar. The, the blue is wind. The orange is solar and battery, and the pink is the RECIP. So in the reference case, in 2030, all, all sources that we modeled, with the exception of RECIPs, is actually losing money. Now, in the high-market scenario, they're all making money, but in the low-market scenario, again, RECIP is the only one that's making money. And again, a big chunk of this is because the RECIPs have the biggest capacity value, while solar or batteries or wind will have a much lesser amount of capacity value. And also, wind tends to blow the hardest at like early morning or late evening, when Batavia is not really needing the power. You need the power during the daytime.
This per year, or?
I'm sorry.
Is this over a time scale? Is it per year, or is it total cost?
This is one year in 2030.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's part of our data center conversation. We did get some feedback on the public's perceptions of what local generation would look like, and it generally revolved around renewable resources, not necessarily diesel or gas or what have you. Is that factored into this, this outcome, or is this more you're, you're coming in off the street, based on your study, and here's what, what you see?
This just assumes the current Batavia load. And so what we did was, okay, we're, we're seeing the load being relatively flat, and seeing when Batavia is buying power from PJM, when Batavia is selling power into PJM, how much capacity PJM is, or Batavia is buying from PJM. Now, we understand that when the data center comes in, that will, the, the power to serve that data center will be purchased from the market, separate from the Batavia load.
Just to play, to play back, so over the course of that conversation, we did hear a lot of debate around, for instance, the data center proposal, as it currently stands, rightfully has to account for backup power, because they have a 99.999% uptime requirement, right? So we, and for them, they talked about firing up diesel generators locally to cover that, any sort of power gap, right? So if I'm understanding what you're proposing correctly, you're saying, hey, for us to handle any peak loads locally, we would be leveraging a hydrocarbon-based power source, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so just so, so we're aware, we already got some feedback on that of our data center proposal now, that, that's gonna, and thank you for the pre-read. This helps us, you know, anticipate likely conversations.
And again, I don't know what they meant by diesel generators, because diesel generators in the old days used to burn diesel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Nowadays, they can burn natural gas.
Natural gas, oh, that's a little worse.
And I'll also repeat that, burning natural gas is probably cleaner than buying from the PJM market, on average.
I have a handful of questions, and so forgive me if I miss one in my notes and have to raise my hand again. Will the, you know, the parameters that went into the low, high, and base scenarios, are, will those be published, kind of what those factors are?
Yes.
Another kind of practical question, Max, to your intro, about what will be presented to the public? Will it be this document modified, will be the, the, the report that goes out?
The intent is any major changes or conversations you have tonight would then quickly get incorporated, and then this would be, this essentially the 105-page draft is what then would become the preliminary IRP issued to the public, setting off that comment period.
Awesome. So as a representative of a lay public, I went through and I highlighted like all the terms that I just didn't understand, or where sometimes there was an acronym that was explained a couple pages later, instead of like on the front end. So I've got a lot of those highlighted, and I'll maybe just send it to you, Max, with all of my comments and notes in here. About the, the, the natural gas, the assumptions, when natural gas is high, or the price of natural gas is high, then the EV incentive drops, because prices at home to charge your car goes up, right?
So natural gas is high, so electricity price is high.
EV?
And so EV goes down.
Goes down. How do natural gas prices and gasoline prices correlate? And is that factored in to this at all?
So natural gas prices and gasoline prices used to correlate a lot, but not anymore.
Okay.
So natural gas is a domestic market. Gasoline, which is oil-based, is a global market. So, so they, they tend to, they no longer are as correlated as they used to be. And if you look at Northern Illinois, in the old days, a lot of the industry used to burn what's called bunker oil. That's like the residual of all the oils after you refine it. But nowadays, those are coming closer to the natural gas prices, so people are just burning natural gas, even just for the, not only for the environmental purposes, but for the economic purposes as well.
Yeah, go for it.
I apologize, it's just based on that. In, in our region, where are we sourcing natural gas typically from? You say it's a local market. Are we talking Illinois local, or are we talking domestically?
Forty-eight state local.
Forty-eight state local, and so is that primary pipeline for the Northern Illinois region, or is it trains primarily?
It's pipelines.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a pipeline map, but if you look at the pipeline map, everything from the Rockies to the east, it's all meshed, and Illinois has a huge hub of natural gas coming in.
It was marked in the supply-side resource options that were not considered, that geothermal, little geothermal resource near Batavia. I know there's a number of churches nearby and a couple homes in Batavia that have recently gone geothermal. Is it just that it's not, like, the scale resource isn't there, but on these individual basis, it's an option? Is that something that we could promote? Kind of like we promote local generation, self-generation?
So, so you, you could, if you can do the feasibility study. And by the feasibility study, what I mean is, geothermal is a nascent technology, at least today. And so the question is, how long is it going to last? And is it actually going to produce power when you need it? And if not, what is the cost? And if the cost is low, then perhaps yes, but if the cost is higher, which we find the cost of geothermal projects to be higher than what we observed here, and less reliable, then you may think twice about it.
And then to the pages that kind of evaluate the cost differences between the different options, the solar and battery versus the natural gas versus standalone solar, is there a way to articulate that? Since one of the things we were looking at, and it's mentioned in the study, too, is the results of the survey and how much Batavians said that they would be willing to spend extra to go with a renewable or, you know, zero emission options. Is there a way to kind of frame it in, in those terms, like it's this much percentage more to go this route than the natural gas option?
I think a lot of the, so, so there's two things.
What slide should cover that I believe?
The cost comparison, page 70.
I don't think I can keep talking though.
If it was clearly laid out, I missed it, I apologize.
I'm thinking it's this one where you have the levelized cost of energy.
The what?
If you look at the second from the last column where it says ELCC, that's effective load carrying capability, that is how much value there is in terms of capacity. So 49% means 100-megawatt asset only has the capacity value of a 49-megawatt asset.
Say that one more time so I can...
So 49% means that 1-megawatt of capacity has a contribution of 0.49 megawatts. So if you build 1-megawatt of four-hour battery, the odds of you being able to dispatch it in real time because you need it is kind of only about half of it.
Slide 21 has a really good chart that shows cost premium if you're...
Wouldn't it actually be 50% of 80%, given it's a battery? Because don't you take 80%? Like a giant UPS, right?
Yes, it is like a giant UPS. But that is on the energy side. So the...
Oh, gotcha.
So the 49 is inclusive of that.
Gotcha.
So you can see in this table that battery, the capacity value of battery is about half of the capacity value of the recip. The capacity value of standalone solar is significantly lower. Standalone wind is about a quarter. And thereby, when you're trying to avoid payments for capacity, even if all the prices are the same, natural gas has the edge. But if you look at the price range, you can see that on a per ELCC basis, natural gas clearly has edge.
So on this chart, just from Batavia perspective, a common feedback we do get from homeowners, especially when they, after they move in, is my power bill is very high compared to where I came from. Okay, this is something we hear all the time. So I think it would help the public and myself as a homeowner here. If I could see a percentage, and it's already here at 100%, see, and I apologize, the average increase per my existing bill based on these scenarios would be very helpful to me to make it real. If we had it somewhere else, I apologize.
I think that's what Max was pointing to earlier.
On slide 21, it basically assumes that the recip would be... Market, low market, you can see how each of those differs in aggregate.
Well, and just so you're aware, we just got this, started this meeting, so we haven't really digested this yet. When we talk about, I would just say a straight percentage, like your bill is going to go 5% versus this scenario versus, like how we do property tax increases, you know, we'll say, hey, a $300,000 home can expect this percentage of increase in taxes.
We can certainly put that...
Did you make it digestible like that? Okay.
My final question and comment would be that the charts all go off till 2045. That's when we expect that CEGO will shut down natural gas as a power source.
No, no, no. The 2045 is arbitrary cutoff point because we were asked to do a 20-year projection.
Fair, fair. Okay, I'm just pointing out 2025, 2045 is when the state of Illinois is planning to phase out natural gas. So then our recip, which it said it had a 20 or 30-year lifespan, 30?
With the recip, one of the things would be that within CEGO, there obviously would be an end to that useful lifespan where it would either need to convert to another source such as hydrogen or other technology that at this time is not proven or existing, or shut down. So that is another thing to consider, is that at some point, CEGO will require that if you do choose to go this, that there would be a finite time length where you need to move to some sort of other fuel, which again, at this time, has not proven to be economically feasible yet. So that's something that still is an unknown, and that's why IRPs tend to sometimes work in kind of five-year intervals because as you continue to do those iterative processes, you learn more every time.
And that's why I introduced the immediate timeframe now to five years where you can actually take action, five to 10 years when you're kind of looking at things and say, okay, I need to make, those should be my next decision, and then 10 to 20 years, which is more aspirational, and the 2045 is somewhat aspirational. Now, with that said, a lot of manufacturers are testing hydrogen, as Max said, on these engines or gas turbines. A lot of utilities are kind of betting on that as well. So the cost is a little bit too high right now. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just going to mention the recip idea. I mean, you bring up a good point, Abby, but let's remember what they are at their core, right? They're internal combustion engines, so they can be probably retrofitted fairly easily, just as they were to go from diesel to natural gas, to go to, you know, potentially another cleaner fuel source or something that can crank that engine over and create the energy. So it could be a...
Probably marketing them as natural gas hydrogen ready.
Right.
When you're looking at new generators.
I think the biggest problem right now is the cost of hydrogen is just too high. But if you look at what happened, let's say, at the cost of solar panels or the cost of batteries or whatnot, it has come down quite a lot. Cost of natural gas came down significantly with the fracking technology. So in 20 years, it's very hard to say what the cost of hydrogen will be, or there could be alternative fuels that will be developed. Again, but that is more of an aspirational timeframe, so we don't have a concrete recommendation for 2045 at this timing yet.
But we can assume the internal combustion engine will still be around.
Yes.
To the point about breaking it down for a homeowner, when I look at this slide, I see that a battery electric storage system is a 1% adder. That's nothing on a $400,000 investment. So I think it is important to break it down to a homeowner level, hey, this is how you're going to affect, because that battery electric system isn't the same, doesn't have the same capacity, if I'm using the right terms, as that generator system, so.
Individualistic level. And then one of the other points I do want to say is the change in the tax credit law has changed so much of the economics of this type of IRP process. If you look at this with tax credits, which again, the one, the one big beautiful, you know, basically ended all federal tax credits for renewable energy, much more of these scenarios would have been profitable. So that's something that, you know, and I previewed this when we talked about our energy policy and other things, is the federal government is pulling us one way, the state is pulling us another, and the economy is doing another thing. So I don't envy your position, obviously, but there is, there's a lot to consider in here, both with your policy and your goals, as well as the market economics of it as well.
One thing to keep in mind is that when we once, once talked to the public, this has been a passionate conversation, Batavia's energy policy, based on our Prairie State fiasco, you know, that we walked into. So this time around, people are looking for simpler, quicker explanations of stuff because I think there was an impression people were like, you know, the wool was pulled over their eyes last time. So we don't, we don't want to give that impression again. One thing you did say, which if I were, and I am, I'm a homeowner in Batavia, if I look back at all the passion and all the, all the arguments over the years or whatever, and then I look at your report, and the first thing I see is that Batavia's energy usage has gone down over the past, whatever, 10 years. You're right. Yeah, and we're not saying why. I mean, I would want to know why has the power gone down over the past 10 years? What has happened? Is it less people or more efficient? We've rehabbed so much of these older homes to be more efficient that, you know, I mean, like, I want to know the why.
So if I could clarify, has the energy gone down or has it remained flat over since 2018?
It's gone down a little bit. So in 2024, it was 85.5 peak. 2018 was 89.7, so about 3%, 4% down. Same with the consumption. In 2018, it was 433, and 2024 was 415, so slowed down. I think one of the reasons was that the industry left, not necessarily the residential or the commercial, but the industry left.
You don't have to answer, I'm just, just in the report, let's just get it in there. And then the other thing I noticed, and again, I apologize, we did just get this report, I noticed when we talked about EV usage, you said we had 89 EVs, which I know we have a lot more than that. How are you determining how many EVs that we have? Do we give you some information on that or?
That's how many permanent installations we've had, and that's also based on our estimate from the survey that we conducted. That is, that is what had installed in our apartment, apartment stations.
It is dramatically more than that. So I just give an example, I could, I can look down my block, go check right, check left, I could identify seven households that have EVs, right? So I don't know how we get a right number there.
Not everyone charges at home.
Not in a landlord apartment, too. Right, yeah.
Yeah, I guess he's just pointing out it's maybe a not indicative number.
Yeah, 89 is way too low. I don't...
Also for that, did you include like hybrid, hybrid electric or plug-in hybrids as well?
We did ask about plug-in hybrids as well as part of the survey we sent out. There was not a lot of people said they had. Yeah, so we looked at that, and then I believe some of the other considerations are kind of what the comm and area is projecting in terms of EV and other, and other load growth and that as well. So I believe that also is something that gets baked in, in addition to kind of what our own data shows at this point.
Back to you.
A few more questions. In the market price outlook section, you say that, you estimate that the PJM capacity price is, assuming that recently observed market volatility will pass and capacity prices will settle. What makes you think so? Why do, why do we have hope that those, that volatility will, will settle?
So there's a few things about the PJM capacity market. One is that there's a process called the interconnection queue, where the generator wants to connect to the, to the grid, and they have to go through a process, and that's backlog right now. And it's taking about five years for the generators to go through that process, which is holding back of new capacity being built. Now, once that is freed up, because PJM is mandated to free that up, then all of a sudden, you're getting a flood of capacity coming in, which could lower the capacity, the tightness of the capacity, leading to a lower price.
You think clearing out that backlog will keep up with the data centers coming online?
Well, data center is another thing, and that is actually pushing upward pressure on it. But in many cases, data centers sometimes come with their own generators, and in that case, it won't be part of the capacity market. So it works in both ways, and we're not sure which way it goes.
And a question about the table that is on, it's in chapter seven, on page 79. It's a summary of program impact potential, the different things that you've recommended, the participants needed in Batavia to hit one mega load of load reduction. Is that a cumulative table? Like, we need, we need 10,000 residential time varying rates and 435 commercial, or is each one of those lines, each is...
It's each one of them.
We'll do one megawatt of reduction.
So you need 10,000 residential customers to reduce 1-megawatt of peak load.
Okay.
Now, in 2030, we're estimating that only 2,000 people will be participating in that. And so in 2030, that's only 0.2 megawatts or 20% of the battery equivalent.
And why did you say that energy efficiency was not a moderate relevance to kind of our conversation in a previous page?
Energy efficiency does not necessarily reduce the peak load.
Oh, okay.
So for example, your refrigerator will run 24/7, so energy efficient refrigerator could reduce the peak load a little bit, but a lot of the energy efficiency is in like lighting. Yeah, you turning off the light at this time is not going to help you reduce the 2pm peak load.
Gotcha, okay, thank you very much.
Question, going back to the data centers online, usually only the bigger data centers have their own generation or, you know, incorporate that into a deal. Some of the smaller ones, like with one we're looking at on the east side, that's a much smaller one that really doesn't have its own generation other than to sustain themselves for short periods of time, you know, when they would lose power input. So how do you think that's going to handle? I mean, that's one of the things that I think kind of throws that number off if there's a whole bunch of small ones that don't have their own generation or couldn't put that generation back into the network versus a larger, giant-sized one that would be out there that would have its own generation.
Just like everything else, there's economies of scale and scope, and you as a business owner of doing whatever with the data center may only need 30 megawatts. But building 30 megawatts is probably on a per-megawatt basis much more expensive than building 1,000 megawatts. And there are businesses that are out there who are building data centers for leasing purposes, just like there are real estate agents who are building apartment houses for leasing. And overall, because data centers don't really matter location-wise, as long as, what they care about is whether there's cooling power and there's electric power for that purpose. When you do a Google search, the actual server may be in Germany rather than in the US. So it really doesn't matter from that perspective. So when you think about that nature, there may be pop-ups of 30 megawatts here, 50 megawatts there and so on, but the bigger picture will be the gigantic data centers being built as a, as an aggregate, more than the smaller ones.
Like 1,000 megawatts or bigger.
Yes.
Okay. When we talk, so as a homeowner, and what's going to come up very quickly, especially when we talk about backup power, they're going to ask where? Like, where would the backup generators be? Where would the backup, you know, natural gas, like, and the reason why, as a town, believe it or not, this may be shocking for folks to hear, we're almost built out, right? So we used to talk about things like, we're going to have backup power locally, where it's actually going to live becomes important.
We haven't done that study yet, and that's one of the reasons that, one of the recommendations is to actually get quotes and issue an RFI or something to see what's feasible, what's not feasible.
I will rent my backyard to you.
Industrial park, wanted as far away from residential units as possible. That, to me, would be the only place you would think of.
Of course, yeah.
I mean, Geneva's is off of 38 and Kirk Road.
Still some land back by our power station there.
Again, these things take three to five years to develop in the first place, so...
It'll take 10 years.
Yeah, it could take 10, but, but that's why we have it in the X and Y's for the first five years, and we do recognize that there's a backlog of this stuff as well.
I have the opportunity in Chicago, I'm the, on the, the, or the, I'm one of the officers at Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning downtown at the old post office. And one of the things that I get asked quite frequently by our staff down there is this growth factor, population growth factor, that they are detecting is happening in Batavia. And they are suggesting, where our number drops off here, I don't think it's on this sheet, but we've grown like 1.6% up through 2023 per year or something, it was, that number was on there. They had asked me about that because starting in the end of 2022 through what will be probably the end of 2026, Batavia will have added over 800 new living units to our community. And we're going to be one of the pop-up numbers that's going to have a stronger population growth than much of the surrounding area here as far as the number of people who are moving in. And I mean, I could put you in the car and take you out and show you where all this is happening, and it's there and it's under construction right now. So, I mean, I think we've got, the one thing when I started reading this and I had the concern about was, are we really taking into consideration the population growth that could be occurring here? And I think you've done a pretty good job in trying to identify it, but there is, there is pockets, as they say in Chicago, where growth is really grabbed on and kicking on. where growth is really grabbed on and kicking on. And in Kane County, it's our area. And then if you go up in the northwest corner, it's Hampshire and Huntley. Those are the two towns up in the north end that got a big population. Of course, they don't have electric utilities to worry about up there. But that's where you're going to have some other major population growth in the next five years or so. But we're one of the five, one of the ones in western Chicagoland that does have the population growth setting itself in here right now.
So we did the best to gather a lot of information. Some will say it's going, others will say it's shrinking. So we made our judgment. But understanding that every assumption is different, we do have a high and low case to kind of see the sensitivity of things. And if there are certain data sets that we can cite and use, which we're perfectly happy to do so, we can incorporate that. Now, I won't be able to fix it for this round. But as Laura said, we're doing three other studies. Following the IRP, we're doing a infrastructure study, looking at how the distribution system has to be upgraded or whatnots. We're also doing a cost of service study because the last time Batavia did a cost of service study was 2013. The cost of service study tells you how to allocate all the costs to different customer classes. And then it'll be followed by a rate study. And once that is done, we will come back to the IRP because we may find that some of the stuff that we recommended in IRP may have unwanted consequences. For example, whatever recommendation we made, when you go through the infrastructure study or the cost of service study, may actually increase costs more than we wanted to. And so we're having that loop. So if there's additional information that you would like to share with us regarding those load growths or any other things, we will be happy to incorporate that into the final IRP, which will happen in early 2026.
Yeah, I'm sort of shifting gears a little bit here. I'm kind of looking at the demand side stuff. And, you know, it's all sort of things that most of us are familiar with. Time of use rates, interactive thermostats, you know, smart thermostats and things like that. I apologize, I did receive it back on the 10th, but I didn't get a chance to dive in deeply. So are we going to get, or is there in here sort of what the rollout for a municipality to implement time of use rates is? And I mean, I assume there's a cost and a rollout time that goes with that, which might impact our, you know, impact the impact on our grid.
Slide 82 has like the five-year action. And at the very bottom, we have the demand side resources. And our recommendation, we suggest that you start with a pilot. And if you, if you go back a few slides and, and sorry, I'm not trying to blind you guys. But if you look at this slide, smart thermostat seems to be the best bang for the buck compared to the battery. But also, if you look at this slide, you can see that commercial TOU rate seems to have a lot of good benefits.
There's no reason not to say.
There's no reason not to do it. So, but you do want to understand what it does. And because TOU rates will impact the revenues collected by the utility, which could potentially impact everyone else's rate, we suggest that you start with a pilot for several reasons. One is to estimate the actual response rate of those guys. Because even if you have a TOU rate, if the commercial customers or residential customers, whoever you're targeting, does not respond, then maybe the price difference is not good enough. And that elasticity really depends on the system and demographics and location and the industry and economies of the local area.
You know, as I think on it, and I'm not very well versed in this, is it is sort of an ROI kind of question, right? Is sort of implementing the system worth the savings? And, you know, maybe we spend more money or we, you know, find a way to do it. So that's, I'm interested in diving into that and finding out where that goes. Thank you.
And right now, we just don't have enough Batavia specific information on how this may work out. So our recommendation is to start collecting that information, go on a campaign and start with a few pilots so that you understand it. And also, the pilots will help the utility side understand how to operate or do that stuff. But before we even start this, we have to actually figure out whether the current rate is appropriate, which goes into the cost of service and rate design study that I mentioned earlier. Yes.
I'm sorry, last question. Just connect a couple of things that we've just talked about in the past 15 minutes. So first off, we had the mayor say we do have more development pending. 600 households are coming, right? Which is, which may change some of the variables here as far as future estimates or what have you. But probably not too significantly. We also learned a lot when we did our data center proposal, right? Unfortunately, you were not part of that. But we got a lot of feedback from public. And quite frankly, I think Brattle Group was mentioned at least 50 to 40 times during that conversation. And then finally, so what I'm trying to say here is that we are really getting to a point where we're almost completely built out. Even if we say industrial area, I mean, okay, how big? One acre, two acre, six acres, 12 acres, right? And the reason being is that if we, if we're going to move, remove this out of the realm of fantasy and make this real, we say we're really going to do local generation, then we need to get some sizing parameters now so we know to set aside some land now. Because in 10 years, that may be the location for that local generation stuff. Because I will say, having lived here for a bit, when we've had these conversations in the past, we heard like these scenarios where we're going to take part of Fermilab and set up all this local generation stuffs. And now that this is becoming real, that's not an option, right? So it has, so local means local. So the question is, how big a space do we need to set aside now? So we don't build on it or have it, or make, have it zoned correctly. And then secondly, what are the potential noise parameters? You know, what are the potential of all these scenarios, right? Because I'm sure natural gas versus battery versus solar or whatever, a lot of different noise is going to be generated. We're just going to impact people who are going to live around that property, right? So these are things we need to know now as part of this conversation. Or else we're going to fight over fantasy for a lot of this stuff.
And that's where the RFI comes in. Obviously, you talked about land. Solar takes a lot more land.
I get it. Yeah. I'm not trying to point something.
So the land limitations may actually limit the capacity you could build. For comparison purposes, we assume 10 megawatts for all the technologies, just because it was an easy round number and it hits people's mind easier. But you may end up just building five megawatts of one type and then two megawatts of something else.
So how many acres per megawatts required?
Again, that depends on the technology that you're using. You can't really say the acres, whether the, RECPs will probably take less acres than solar or wind. Now, the question becomes, how many acres do you have? Which may be a determinant in how large a RECP you can build. Or the alternative is you come up with, okay, I want to make eight megawatts. How much land do I need now? Where do I, how far do I have to go to, to get that land? So it's a chicken and egg problem.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I think, I mean, if I'm understanding, this is kind of what you're laying out for us. And it's up for us as council to kind of lay out what Jim is discussing, right? I mean, I think you're right, Jim. I think, but if you were looking for that in this, it's not what they were doing. 100%, we need to have those discussions because it looks to me like Brattle Group is pointing us in a pretty clear direction here, you know, from a data perspective. Now it's what do we want to do with that data?
I guess how, the question I have is, how do we get to the public and so that they understand this is step one? And step one could be completely altered by step two. And step two could be completely altered by step three because we might come up with this plan for natural gas, but find that where we put it requires huge installation costs and transmission costs that completely throw it out of the way. So I think that's really a challenge to send this to the public, tell them this is the plan. But at the same time, don't get too attached to this plan. We've got two more plans to go. So good luck, Max.
I was going to say, you know, as part of what we'll be doing, as part of this public comment process, we will also give a version of this presentation to the general public that runs through the assumptions, runs through kind of the, here's how this fits into the other plans we're working on. We touched on that when we did our pre-IRP public meeting, where we talked about how this all fits in. And that really, the goal of this is to get step one. So we can work on infrastructure, cost of service, rate design. Then we take all the public comment, all the feedback, all the input that you, the council, the residents, the rate payers, et cetera, put in. And we modify it to reflect that feedback. And then we come back to you. And ultimately, the city council is the one who makes a decision on what gets adopted, what gets put in. You know, we may find that as we go through this and we do an RFI or something, that that is different, that we're getting different prices than what we anticipated for different types of resources. But the goal of this is to give you kind of a five-year timeline of what you should be looking into. And then ultimately, you're going to be faced with a tough decision. Like we've said, the market and the politics are often not aligning here. And I, like I said, I do not envy the position that you are in right now.
Sorry, I have one more question. And it's the silliest, easiest one you're going to hear all night. We are in a long-term contract for 55 megawatts of power. Is there anything limiting us to changing that? And would that put us in a better position or a worse position?
So I don't know what you mean by better or worse because that's subjective. But as far as I see today, you're benefiting from that 55 megawatts because it's more energy than you can use. And you're buying that energy at a price that's cheaper than what the market offers. And you're selling off your excess energy to the market. So financially, I think you're doing good. Environmentally, people may have allergies against coal.
But if we were at 65, we would be able to sell off more. We'd be more protected for peak usage, but maybe at a higher price. I don't know.
This was the argument that we went through when we decided, I'm the one that's left from when we got into Prairie State. We started out at 50. We debated about going to 60. 55 is where we ended up because we figured that was just enough that we could make some money when we got to the point where the price met. And then you'd be able to sell that off if we weren't using it. And it's taken, you know, the amount of time it's taken to get there. And, you know, I think, I'm not going to try to defend what we did, but we made the best decision, I think, we could at the time for what we had projected out. And this is why I think the IRPs are a good thing to have and talk about this on a regular basis. So you have an idea of what you think you're going to use and what you think you're going to need to change on a regular basis. It's just a plan. So we have to, you know, that, Jim's right. We have to make sure that the public knows that, that this plan is going to get, you know, we're walking up a flight of stairs and sometimes there's something in the way. Sometimes it's a big step, sometimes it's a little step. But that's something that we, as people in the council, are going to have to be able to convey. And I think in a lot of respects, that's what I think they want to do with the state legislature and their rules on it. I just don't know if it's going to be the easiest thing for all of us to do.
Yeah, I was getting my notebook out because I was beginning to forget what I wanted to say. But a few things on that. First off, I know it was sort of a joke and a quib saying, good luck, Max. But really, I think it's good luck us. And I think that's, we're reiterating kind of what, you know, Alan was just saying there as well. I found this very useful. I think this has really clarified a lot of my thinking on this. It wasn't so long ago that we had a discussion talking about building our own power plants and is that worth it? Or should we not be in the power generation business anymore? And this now tells me that we weren't crazy to be thinking down those lines, right? It kind of affirms that I'm not as stupid as I thought I was and that we are kind of thinking the right thoughts. And with, you know, with respect to Alan, who was on the council at the time, I remember at the time thinking, why are we buying coal? Coal's dead, right? I'm worried we're looking at natural gas. And in my mind, I'm thinking natural gas is dead. Why would we buy an old technology? But I've been Googling it, the lifespans on these are shorter and the upfront costs are shorter. So maybe, maybe that equation works out better than a giant coal power plant. But this report is giving me a lot of guidance. It's really helping me. And I'm looking forward to the public comment period where we're going to hear what, you know, the people have to say about that. Because I think we're going to get a lot of opinions. I think we're going to hear a lot about how natural gas is maybe not the way to go. But maybe economically, we have to do that. I bought, you know, again, I sort of hate taking giant macro concepts and making them sort of micro. But I bought a car at the height of COVID. I really wanted an electric car. I really, really did. But there was that chip shortage and I couldn't buy one. Literally couldn't buy one. That might be where Batavia is at. I hope it's not. And maybe going solar and all that doesn't make economic sense now. But if natural gas is going away someday, maybe it is, right? This gives me a little bit of guidance and insight. So that's a long-winded way of saying, I do appreciate this. And I think it's raised the right questions and focused where I'm thinking we need to go. And I think that public comment is going to be really useful in guiding us both in the politics of it, which are important. Politics matter, they're real. But the economics of it, which also matter and are also real. And trying to find that middle ground is going to help our citizens. So thank you. That's a long way of saying thank you.
There's one more reason that we recommend RECPs rather than combined cycles. RECPs are small. And if it doesn't work out here, you can move it elsewhere. Meaning you can sell it with relative ease. Also, RECPs, as you indicated earlier, can be retrofitted to burn different types of fuel. So if hydrogen cost becomes lower or some other fuel comes, becomes lower, you can retrofit it. And you can also probably do the same thing with Prairie State as well because that's a coal plant. Coal plant means the boiler is humongous because the per unit energy in coal is a lot smaller than the per unit energy in gas or oil. So converting coal burning boilers to oil or gas burning boilers is easy because you can still get enough heat to produce that steam. But the other way around is difficult because when the boiler size is limited and the amount of heat you get from the fuel is limited, you can't really get enough steam. But in the case of Prairie State, you can. So these options that we have in front of you do have the option, if the right technology comes along, to convert into a different fuel type.
I wonder, reiterate, you all, as well as the general public, could feel free to ask staff any questions you have as you continue to reach through this. There is no real urgency at this time. You know, we're going to go through a public comment process. We're going to basically, on this IRP, make some small edits to reflect your feedback. But then it's more or less going to be published through the end of the year. We'll respond to every comment, we'll answer any questions. You know, truly, you want, if you're like, hey, can you show me more about your assumptions for this? Or can you show me the data behind this? We can talk through that and get you that information. We want you to understand what you've been presented with and have the time to digest, read through it because it is going to be an important but difficult decision that you may be facing about in a couple of months or when you get presented with the final IRP. So, you know, we're looking forward to this public comment process. You know, I think we're all obviously, you know, as the city council, learning a lot about electricity and the current situation that both Batavia and the market are in. I just want you to know that any questions, no matter how small, if it's like, hey, what's this term? What does this acronym mean? Please reach out and, you know, to Alderwoman's back point, we'll work on. You know, if you have questions or things, all of that gets put into a document. That document that gets publicly posted. And then we'll go through this again with a final IRP, which will include all of that public comment, all of that input. And then that's what you would be adopting later next year. So that kind of lays out what we should be expecting over the next several months. And yeah.
I would repeat that, as you said, IRPs are not done once it's done. Once it's done, you now have to start looking at the next IRP cycle. That's why I think the legislature says you have to redo the IRP every so often. A lot of utilities do it every three years or five years. And that's because the system is constantly changing. One of the comments that we received was that the capacity prices that we showed, historical capacity prices, did not reflect the latest capacity market that cleared back in, back this summer, just because of the timing of things. But you can actually see the capacity prices were significantly higher this last summer.
Well, I think we want to thank you for coming down and sharing your focuses with us on, as you heard, we've got some wide variety of conversation going on here. And it's good. I think that certainly it's my position here that whatever we do here, we got to make sure we've explored all this and we know what the answers are and what the problems could be. And so that nobody can say, we just put that here on this table and we have to buy into it and we're paying for it. We want to be in a position to be able to say, we've studied this, we know what was going on and we want to make sure that we got the right course of action before us. So that's why, obviously, we've hired you to come in and give us your viewpoints and appreciate your insights. So I don't think this conversation is probably not over. We'll probably have another meeting here in a few weeks or months. And we'll continue to go forward with this because this is a very important thing and we don't want to go down the wrong road here with this whole thing. So I appreciate your good efforts.
An honor to serve you and please send Max and the team any questions you may have. We'll share that internally and try to get back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, if we go to this agenda that we got before us here, the other thing is item six, city council updates, any project status? No. And then we have any other business? No. So I guess we go to seven, which is. Motion.